All right, seven o'clock, are we ready? Let's do it, okay. Welcome everyone to San Quentin City Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Would anyone tonight like to get us started with a thought or an invocation?
I have a thought I can share.
Please.
This is from Benjamin Franklin, he said without continual growth and progress such as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning.
Well said, thank you Commissioner Tolman. All right, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I can do that.
Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Commissioner Wade. Okay, on the screen here, we have our agenda for this evening. I'm not going to read it, but we're just going to proceed in this order unless anyone has any objections to that. Okay. Before we get started though, we're going to have a public forum, which for members of the public who are present, that's your opportunity to address the commission about anything that's on your mind. However, as you can see on the agenda, we have three public hearings. So if you have comments directly related to one of those agenda items, please hold those comments and we'll let you speak then. But if there's anything else you'd like to address the commission about, now's the time. So I will open the public forum tonight at seven oh one. Would anyone like to address the planning commission during the public forum tonight? Okay, then we will close the public forum at seven oh one and we will move right into agenda item number one. This is a proposed change to the public facility zone.
Okay, this is going to be very similar to the rezone that happened back in January. We're rezoning city property about eighty-seven point one eight acres from residential to public facility zone. Most of this property is just like, there's a water tank or open space. These are the locations. North of Summit Ridge and then a little bit to the west and then right here at the north of town and then these other locations as well. And then this is the proposed ordinance. We're not going to read through the whole thing. And then, just like the overview of the zoning maps, they're just those little sections like down here. And then, just as a reminder, you're going to be making a positive or negative recommendation to city council to approve the rezone of the approximately eighty-seven point one acres and to open a public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just, uh, just to let everyone here, if you're here for the the zoning amendment or if you're watching online, so this is more of a, if you're looking at, is there housing going in or what's happening or is it multifamily? This is, this zone that we're zoning it to is specifically for public facilities like water tanks, things like that. Residential homes, any type of residential development is not allowed in the PF zone chain or in the PF zone. So this is only for public facilities like water tanks, booster pumps, parks, open space, city open space.
Yeah, well said, that's, that's good, thanks Ryan. I think I misspoke, I think I probably said it was a change, a proposed change to the public facility zone, but of course, that's not the case, it's a proposed rezone of properties to the public facility zone, so I apologize for that. All right, after that introduction, we do have a public hearing tonight, so let's go ahead and proceed with the public hearing on agenda item number one. I will open that public hearing now at seven oh four PM. Would anyone like to speak tonight with regard to this proposed change of zone on these properties to the public facility zone? Please, please state your name for the record for us.
My name is Mark Openshaw, we own the orchard adjacent to one of the zones at the mouth of the canyon. Just a couple of questions, I wasn't able to come to the city prior to this meeting to visit. What was the previous zone and why is the zone being changed?
So, um, is it this, the pond here or is it over in this area over by the orchard?
By the debris basin, yeah.
Debris basin. So there, it used to be, or sorry, it's not used to be, it currently is our twenty zone.
Okay, so residential.
Residential, yeah, half acre lots. The reason why we're zoning it is we have some water tanks and different facilities on, on the property. And so it just fits water tanks, public facility, things like that, fit in the zone of the PF zone. And we thought it'd be good to rezon because we don't have a plan on having it be residential anytime soon.
Okay, so this is just procedural.
Yeah.
For all aspects.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the commission tonight on this agenda item? Okay, in that case, we will close. Did you, oh sorry, I didn't see you, thank you. Please state your name for the record for us.
My name is Ronnie Miller and we live up at the, at the end of Main Street now, on the east bench. And I think, I haven't been able to see the maps or find them online to know, but I think it's right behind us. Is there any chance it would be a sewage facility?
So let me pull up the county parcel map for you really quick. So I know, hopefully it works, sometimes it's slow. So, we are rezoning this property right here and I believe, because that's towards the end of Main Street, or these so that is actually, so we have a water tank up here and then we have a park, it's going to be a park. So nothing like that, all the sewage plant is, that's all located over by the Public Works Building, uh, north of town.
Good, you just had me worried when you said water tanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments tonight in this public hearing? Okay, if there's no more comments, then we will close the public hearing at seven oh seven. Those are good questions, I'm sure they would have come up during the discussion. Commissioners, what other questions do you have about this proposed rezoning of these properties?
So, as an example, the piece that's in Summit Ridge, we've got the well on part of that property and then we've got a road that was originally supposed to go back that direction. And if, where it's, where it is where it is, the location of it, I would think that there might be some opportunities for other development in there. So if the city did decide to sell that and it was developed something else, it would just go through the process of rezoning to become whatever that is. And this is not going to hold it back. Okay.
Yeah, so what will happen later, later on, say the cities, oh, we want to sell this to somebody, maybe, you know, have it developed, they go through a rezone process where the planning commission, city council could decide what the appropriate zone would be and what the, you know, per the uses in those zones.
So just like we did with the light industrial park that's going in on the north end of Summit Ridge Parkway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So I actually have, both of our houses got the note from the city. And I think, I saw it all over both the Facebook pages that we're on. I think people are mostly concerned about building homes there, which obviously we can't do that on that, and right now we can with it being that, the zone it is. But I think more trying to be the voice of the people that I live around. I think people are more like wanting to know what can go on there if we change it to this zone. So what are some things that it could change to, like I know right now, nothing's there, but is there anything that we need to know could possibly be there later down the road, years from now even?
So I'll pull up the uses, they're, they're mainly, again, like public facility type uses. Let me pull it up really quick.
It's in the defined PF zone, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And so these are the, the different uses that would be allowed, so you have like culinary, government offices, hospital, public quasi buildings, safety buildings, utilities, religious centers, schools. So it's, it's mainly public uses, like hospitals, schools, utilities, uh, items of that nature. But I can leave this up if you would like and you can look through it just for a second.
So what is solid waste disposal site, like what is that? So, that would be more like the north end, but the north end is just a tiny little area, right?
Yeah.
And then we already have it up there, yeah.
Yeah, we already have one up there and we aren't going to want to put it somewhere else right now because it costs a lot of money where we can expand. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just asking the questions that people around me have asked.
Great question. It really is.
And anyone who's listening, if they are wondering these same things.
That's not a solid waste facility, solid waste facility is the, is the city.
Okay, so it's not going to, like these little areas aren't going to become a dump?
No.
Because they're so little anyways, right?
And we already have a city where we have our city dome right now.
Right.
Yeah.
What about the temporary concrete batch plant that's conditional use, but could that go on any of them though? Going back to the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago too about one?
So it possibly could, but it would have to be approved by the city because it's all city property.
Like we did a couple of weeks ago for that.
Yeah, and that was, we, the city was willing to do it there because it is away from residential and different things like that. And so one thing to remember is this is all city, city property that we're rezoning. So they would have to work with the city council to do an agreement to run something there. And it would have to be within, uh, these uses. And so, a lot of these areas that are, are being rezoned to PF wouldn't be ideal places for a batch plant and the city wouldn't want it there because it would affect the residents nearby.
Good questions. What else?
I think we've hit all the ones I, all my questions, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah, those were all good questions, I think otherwise it's fairly straightforward, what's being proposed tonight. Any further discussion or is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to forward a positive recommendation to the city council that approximately eighty-seven point one eight acres of city-owned property from the residential, as noted, zone and the planned community PC zone, be moved to the public facility zone.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Wade, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Nixon, any further discussion? All right, let's vote, Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes, Commissioner Hoffman? Sorry, you guys are not sitting in the right spots. Commissioner Hoffman voted, Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
All right, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much, let's move on to agenda item number two. This is, um, proposed code amendment related to plat amendments and parcel line adjustments.
Okay, so this is coming before the planning commission due to several changes in state code in the last few years. Um, and we're trying to get our code updated to match state code. We've been really busy for a few years and didn't have a chance to and it slowed down a little, so we're trying to get caught up now. And we also are fully staffed, so it makes it a little bit easier to, to catch up to. So, um, in the past few years, uh, kind of give you the background to this. About three, four years ago, the state code changed bef- before that, the definition of parcel and definition of lot were the same. And so they would follow the process we have right here that we're removing. Uh, that's the process they would follow. Then about three to four years ago, the state changed and made a definition for parcel, definition for lot. A lot is a property located in a subdivision. A parcel is anything that's not located in a subdivision, that has a meets and bounds description. So they separated the two and then created two processes, one is a lot line adjustment, another one is a parcel line adjustment. Because they created those two new definitions, so it created two processes. One was to move lot lines in a subdivision, another one was to move lot lines not in a subdivision. And so that's what we updated in this section right here. So we removed the old code that wasn't following state code for the last about year and then created lot line adjustment and parcel boundary adjustment. So the lot line adjustment, you have two ways to move a lot line within a subdivision. You can do a plat amendment or you can do a lot line adjustment. And so this is the update to the lot line adjustment. Um, it's pretty much word for word from state code. There's a few minor tweaks, but it's pretty much what is written in state code. And it's the process of how they can do that. And then the parcel boundary adjustment, that's anything that's not located in a subdivision. They can go to the county and record, the city does not have to review that. State code doesn't, makes it so we can't make that a requirement. So if somebody lives, uh, in a parcel, they can go to the county and move their property line without city approval. We recommend that they come and talk to the city because they can move a property line and all of a sudden make their lot illegal, making it too small. So we, when people come and, uh, talk to me about it, I always recommend that they bring either a legal description in for our engineering department to look at or, um, a site plan, something so we can just make sure that it's not gonna, uh, be an illegal lot, but they don't have to, per state code. And so that is what section B is, is pretty much saying they just have to follow the requirements in state code. So that's the changes there. And then when it comes to the plat amendment, uh, we changed to, to match what the requirements are in state code for a petition. So if you're doing a plat amendment, uh, you have to have a petition where everyone that's within that subdivision or what is being, uh, the portion of the plat that's being changed, they have to write the name and address of those people. And then, anyone that is, agrees with the plat amendment can sign it. And if not everyone signs it, then we do a public hearing. Uh, normally that's when we'll do a public hearing. There's a few other changes that we made, uh, so down here, if the plat amendment is doing any of these items A through D, uh, then a public hearing is not required. Most plat amendments fall under one of these items. We removed one that talks about you can subdivide a property, which you actually can't through a plat amendment, you have to go through the subdivision process, so we removed that. And then this item right here, um, that is part of state code. And if they're meeting that requirement, they don't have to do a public hearing. Uh, and so we just updated that. And then the last one we did, this is word for word from state code. If somebody's looking to vacate a street, they have to also do a petition and these are the requirements for that petition. And so, and then up here, the petition we did, we updated up here, that's also word for word, uh, from state code. So tho- those are kind of the, the changes, I'm going in a little more detail because it is kind of changing the process of how we do plat amendments, but if you have any questions, uh, I'm here to answer them and the job of the planning commission tonight is to forward a recommendation to the city council and to hold a public hearing.
Thanks Ryan. All right, let's move ahead with that public hearing now. I'll open the public hearing at seven eighteen. Members of the public, would you like to address the, the planning commission on this agenda item for these proposed changes? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at seven nineteen. And we can move into discussion. So you, um, talked a little bit about the difference between a parcel and a lot and I'm glad you did because that was one of my questions. And the introduction helped, but I think I still have some questions, so. I'm just trying to figure out what my questions are. So does that imply that a parcel is just a piece of property that's never been subdivided? And a parcel could become a lot if it becomes subdivided in the future? Or am I thinking about that wrong?
So.
Well, that's. That's part of the change though, the new definition is for it to be a lot, it has to have been subdivided in the past.
Correct, but you can build a home on a parcel. So if you, if it's existed and never been subdivided illegally and property lines have been moved around, that's okay, if it meets the zoning requirements. And if it does, then it's a buildable lot. So a parcel is a buildable lot. A lot of, uh, the homes in the core area of town, the original part of town, are parcels and not lots. They weren't, uh, created through a subdivision because a lot of them were created back in the early nineteen hundreds. And they're all buildable lots if they haven't been subdivided following the proper process per state code, because that has changed throughout the years. From nineteen forty to two thousand eight, there was different ways of subdividing, but in the early two thousands, state code changed and required all subdivision or all parcels being split, go through a subdivision process. Before then, they could go through a subdivision process, but there was other ways to subdivide legally without going through a subdivision process, but that changed in the early two thousands. So when you think of parcel and lot, don't think parcel as a not, not a buildable lot, it is. It's just, it hasn't gone through the subdivision process that the state requires. So it's, it's an original lot, is a good way of looking at it. Um, or it has been subdivided previously, before two thousand two, going through a proper process. So, for example, in the fifties and sixties, an owner could subdivide their lot one time per that parcel. So if they had a fifty acre parcel, I dealt with this in the county a lot. So if they had a fifty acre parcel, they could subdivide it into two lots without a subdivision process. It would be a legal subdivision, but they wouldn't be able to subdivide those two lots any further. And then later on in the seventies and eighties and nineties, they changed it to one owner can subdivide one time at the beginning. And so, that's kind of the, and it was only allowed to split a lot, you couldn't do like two or three. It'd just be a lot split and you're only allowed to do it one time. But then in the early two thousands, they changed the code to say subdivisions required.
Okay, interesting, that's good. Thanks for the history lesson.
Yeah, so it, it kind of, I, it's kind of interesting, I thought I'd bring it up because it's kind of interesting how it's, you know, evolved throughout the years in state code.
Okay, so my other question was, um, you mentioned that parcel property lines could be moved without the, i- it's a different process, right? Without, that doesn't necessarily require review by the city. There must be some sort of review process or some sort of process that ensures that it's being done correctly, right? So what is that process?
Uh, that would be at the recorder's office, they have certain requirements to be able to record a document. And if it's meeting those requirements, then they will, they will record it. Yeah, at the county recorders, not, not Amly.
Don't go to Amly.
Giving you a hard time.
Because they could illegally make a, a lot line adjustment, make a, a lot, not buildable.
Per the city requirements. That's why I said it's good, a good practice to come in and check with them to make sure it's still a buildable lot. But if you're, if you're moving a property line, you're affecting someone else in some way, so there must also be a process whereby your neighbors agree with whatever it is you're proposing to do.
Yeah, so if you're moving a property line, um, that's, i- it's here in state code. I've listed the references right here. But it has specific requirements that that boundary line agreement has. And one of them is, is both owners, all owners of both lots have to sign and agree to it. And so there's these specific requirements that the boundary line, it's called a boundary line agreement. A lot of them, that's what they do, is a boundary line agreement. And there's certain requirements, one is all the property owners sign, they have that, to have certain uh, legal descriptions in there, they have to list a legal description of where the new property line is. So not just the outside boundary, they have to list the outside boundary of both lots, but then, within that boundary line agreement, they have to list where the new, uh, meets and bounds of that new line will be, just that line. So there's several different requirements and the county recorder's office won't, they're very strict and won't record unless those requirements are met. But as Commissioner Hoffman was saying, it's, they could possibly move it to where it's an illegal lot and if it becomes an illegal lot, then the city can't issue building permits, home occupation, uh, temporary uses, they can't issue anything on that property until it comes back into compliance.
Okay, very good, yeah, thank you, that makes sense.
I deal with, um, the parcel boundary adjustments with people who buy homes or businesses in small parts, like the older parts of towns that are all meets and bound. And it doesn't match their title report exactly, it's like the lot line's adjusted. And if they want that fixed, they have to get everybody to agree to adjust it. And so they just usually leave it because it's just like, well, I'm doing business here and they, they don't bother with adjusting it.
Yeah, sometimes, and it can be hard sometimes, uh, sometimes it might involve four property owners.
Yeah.
And you might have, there might be a dispute with one of the property owners and not, they're not willing to sign. And if they aren't, then that property line's not moving.
But there's claim of, like a chain of title.
Yeah.
That, that takes over at that time, that they're operating and living or using this unit, so they don't have to change the adjustment or the boundary line necessarily.
Yeah.
Interesting, cool, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, those are my questions, what else do we need to talk about?
I think it's good.
I don't think I have any questions. I mean, we're just getting at the state code, right? Like, and this is something we have to do.
Yeah, that's correct, we, we have to get in line with state code and every single change we have in there is to bring us in line with state code. There's no staff like, oh, let's add this. Um, it's all state code changes.
Okay, very good. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, which amends the plat amendment and parcel boundary adjustment process to meet state requirements.
Very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Moak, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Tolman, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote, Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes, Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number three. This is a proposed code amendment related to rear setback exceptions.
Okay, this is coming before the planning commission, this is another state requirement. Uh, House Bill four seventy-six was passed. If you remember last, uh, planning commission, we updated the subdivision requirements, that was also in House Bill four seventy-six. But this, uh, we're required to update our code by November first of this year to meet this requirement for the residential rear yard setback exceptions, that's in four seventy-six. So that's what this, uh, proposed amendment is doing. And I'll just go straight to, to the amendment and we can have a discussion, but this, uh, the first part, uh, paragraph A and then one, one through three, that is all straight out of state code. Um, the, the landing, the walkout porch, the window well, that is word for word how they have those definitions in state code. We are required to, to do that and meet, for, to meet state code requirements. So, these are allow, they call, they call them in state code allowable features. So you have a landing, a walkout porch and a window well. Allow, these allowable features are allowed within the rear setback, um, with certain requirements. So they're allowed to, most of our setbacks are in the rear yard, they're twenty-five to thirty feet, that's kind of standard. They're allowed to go into that, uh, setback. And so, with, with a, a few requirements, so if we go down to paragraph B, uh, number one, so if the, if it's a landing or walkout porch, the area that's within the rear setback, they're allowed to extend into that rear setback thirty-two square feet, so.
So I can't build a twenty by twenty-four deck and call it a walkout?
Yeah. So you can have, you can have the deck, but only thirty-two square feet of that deck can be going out into the, into the rear setback. So, it would be, yeah, there you go. So there was, uh, some, just to make sure, i- it's not that you can only have a thirty-two square foot deck. It's, you can have as big as a deck as you want up to the rear setback. But then, once you start impeding into that setback, only thirty-two square But then once you start impeding into that setback, only thirty two square feet of that landing or deck or walkout porch. Can be within the setback. So that's what the state code requirement is. Um, and then the other, and then the other requirement is the landing or walkout porch and the landing's also considered a deck. Um, it has to be used for egress and e- uh ingress for the rear of the dwelling. So if it doesn't have that, then they can't go into the setback. So they can have thirty two feet or thirty two square feet and then they also have to have a door going in and out. That's connected to that landing or walkout porch. And if they have those things, then they can do that thirty two square feet. And then the other thing that it allows is a window well. It doesn't have any requirement for how, you know, thirty two square feet or anything like that. It's, a window well is allowed to go into the rear setback. Um, and that's exactly how they have it in in state code. There's no other requirements for the window well. And this is only for the rear setback, not the side setback. Uh, so they can't, they can't go into the side setback. Cause a lot of our side setbacks are uh in the original core area of town. It's eight feet, other places it's ten. But in some of the smaller develop or bigger developments like DR Horton, some of those can be seven and a half. And so uh it's, doesn't allow for it to extend into the side. It's only in the rear setback. But again, this is a state requirement. They're requiring us to update the code by November first. Um, our codes to make sure we're in compliance. And uh same, same situation. Your responsibility is forward a recommendation to city council and uh hold a public hearing. And I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. We will proceed with the public hearing now, so I will open the public hearing at seven thirty one. And invite any comments if anyone would like to. Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing at seven thirty two and we can move into discussion.
Where you're meeting state code, there's.
Yep.
Other than what's been said before, we're not supposed to say it in public meetings, so.
Yep.
Um, yeah, exactly that.
Our setback is twenty five feet.
So.
Depends on the.
In this zone.
In uh, depends on the zone, but the standard is twenty five to thirty. And that's where the majority of the rear setbacks are gonna be. There's a few places where they, it may be a little bit smaller. But the largest we have is thirty, more the standard is twenty five.
And it's from the back of the home usually.
Mm hmm, so it's the back of.
The window well, that one's baffling me, but.
Yeah.
So like it's already attached to the dwelling and part of it.
Yeah.
It should already fit. So there's gonna be side window wells too. Um, that are gonna go on that seven and a half foot side setback.
Only dealing with rear setbacks, right?
Mm hmm.
Um.
But we had to define the back.
Yeah, so that's a good question. What, what defines the back of the house?
So how we look at the back of the houses, here, I can pull up a, just kinda make it a little bit easier to show you.
The four foot overhang of the roof or the back of the wall?
Is it the wall, right?
It's probably the wall.
So it's pretty much the closest part. So let's say this house, because this is a deck right here, but let's say. The house extends like this, comes like this, comes back down and comes across like this. The closest part of the house to the property line, that would be considered the um rear yard. So if, let's say this house extended to this point right here and then came across and came down. That would be the part that would have to meet that thirty foot or twenty five foot setback.
And is it the wall? Is it the roof?
So is it the edge of the roof or the?
Um, yeah, so it'll be the wall and then we allow, oh, I think it's two or three feet. You can overhang the roof, two to three feet. Um, but it's where the wall is.
Okay.
That's where the set, set, yeah.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
What if I have a really cool architect that says I need to overhang my roof by like fifteen feet?
Then it becomes a covered porch.
Yeah, it it.
Then it, then that would become the.
From this point, right? And if it's, yeah, it has to be uncovered. If it's covered, that's part of the the requirement. Is for them to be able to extend into the rear setback, the deck has to be uncovered or the patio, so.
So we couldn't have a covered patio that extended into it, but if it's an uncovered, it can extend.
You can, correct.
So you can have the patio go all the way to the end of the only thirty two.
Yeah, this has to meet that thirty two square.
But if it's not covered, it doesn't count.
No, if it's covered, or if it's not covered, you can extend into that rear setback. But you can only have thirty two square feet into that rear setback.
But you can't have a covered one.
Yeah, correct. You can't have a covered.
It says right in here uncovered at above ground, yeah.
So it could be covered up to the point where it intrudes upon the setback.
So if you look uh right here, landing, an uncovered above ground platform with or without stairs. Connected to the rear of the residential dwelling. And then same thing with the walkout porch is an uncovered platform. So you can have it covered all the way to where that setback line is, that twenty five or thirty foot setback line is. And then after that, it has to be uncovered for thirty two square feet maximum.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. That makes sense. All right, is anyone prepared to make a motion? Gonna start twisting arms.
I will. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, which adopts residential rear yard exceptions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nixon.
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wade. Motion by Commissioner Nixon, second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Commissioner Milk?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it's unanimous. All right, thank you. Well, let's move on to agenda item number four. We need to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was held on September tenth, two thousand twenty four. Do we need to have any discussion about those minutes? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Milk. All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. Um, staff, any other business we need to talk about?
Um, so there's two items. Right now for the next planning commission, uh we don't have anything scheduled, so there's a good chance it might be canceled. Uh, but we'll let you know because something could pop up in the next couple of days, but as of right now, it'll probably be canceled. And uh, we did, I did send an email out to the planning commission. I've heard back from a couple of planning commissioners. But as a reminder, uh, we do have that um South Utah County Planning Commission training. That we do each year and that's gonna be held at Springville. I forgot the the date. If you look at your email, I had the the date, but it's in November. The thirteenth, yeah. November thirteenth, it's uh from five thirty to eight thirty. At the Springville Library on the second floor. And this reminder to planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner, you're required to have four hours of training. Do four hours of training every year. And this will count as three of the four hours of training. And then if you come to, I believe it's eight or nine meetings, that also counts as an hour. So, but uh you are required to have that training and that training can be done in many ways, but we thought. Uh, we all got together as a planning staff uh throughout South Utah County and came up with this idea and thought it was the best way to help you. Get the training and we're gonna have a state representative there along with two members of Envision Utah. And the discussion is gonna be about housing. And so if you're able to make it, that that'd be great. But if you can, I've heard from a couple of planning commissioners, but if you haven't responded, if you can get back to me by the end of this week. Let me know if you can make it or not, so I can uh RSVP to Springville so they know how many people are coming. That'd be great. And that's all I have.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Ryan. I was sitting here thinking November was a long ways away, but it's not that far away. It's right around the corner. So we better RSVP, I guess. Okay, commissioners, anything else we need to talk about?
No.
All right, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty.